...regular session, please silence or you set off your cell phones if you would. You join us in the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Welcome everyone, is there any addition or deletion? Awesome. Do we have any addition or deletions to the agenda?
No.
OLTCK was taken on.
Do we want to show the right name?
Oh.
Just right away, get on here. We'll carry that one forward. Okay, with that said, today is the day that our 41st president will be laid to rest. Ask for just a couple moments of time, please. Thank you. So we'll move right on with our agenda. Public comment, first thing. Any public comment?
Deputy.
Deputy.
Well, I just came because, as you know, the commissioners were hugely instrumental in these areas, is what I call it. So, we wanted to... do a car? A car, I think. And, um, so that we just have it forever, because without you, I'm really, it wouldn't have happened. Seriously, it would not have happened. And we just had it signed by everybody, and I just really appreciate what you guys did. And Carpin Hennett and everybody who let Voluntiers help. So this is just for you guys. What?
Quite touching, thank you very much. I brought this forward in meetings with Commissioner Shown and myself. Commissioner Shown supported it, supported our employees, either departments, out and then to go out there and work on this project. And, uh, thank you to people like our employees and the people...
And their big help. No, I'm sorry. And we don't send... Is it just for the playgrounds? Just for the playgrounds? This is a little...
Well, I've got a little bit of a mistake, and I appreciate Commissioner Winters saying that I supported the idea. That was the beginning and the end of my involvement. Commissioner Winters and I happened to stop out there when it was initially being worked on and saw the timeline, and it was not going to properly work. It wasn't working. And I think everybody that's in here from the county played a huge role in that. But it wasn't for Commissioner Winters. Getting things rolling, working with Eron, and working with Jake, working with Ann, was there, and Aron was there, and Aron was there. Many people, I mean, too many as a team. I appreciate that, but I would like to make sure that Commissioner Winters can say that to you guys, because if it wasn't for you, it wouldn't have happened.
I don't get it most of the time, but a little bit. It's our community, it's our county. The fairground was one time that all, all Lake County companies died. And it is an awesome time. Thank you very much, and for the time over. Thanks to everybody that helped. Any other... Public comment? Don't trip. Well, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey. Good to see you, sir.
And there was ice between the line and Fort Rock, and I thought it was going to swallow the birds, but I thought, well, just...
It didn't look weird.
It didn't sound like he didn't catch one.
No.
Okay, so no other public comment, we'll move on down our agenda. First item is the U.S. Forest Service contract modification, and Jake actually came up here today. So we went over this yesterday, this is a modification on our community service work group that we supply and do work, rest areas, restroom, recreation areas. Jake, does you want to say anymore?
Now, just to reiterate what you said, Commissioner, we do get reimbursed mileage from the Forest Service. The mod, it is brought, that brought forward is just a modification of what we previously had entered into with the Forest Service. And there's two changes. One, Alan Brav has left Lakeview, so his replacement, I don't have my paperwork with me, his replacement is listed right there in box nine, towards the bottom of page there. And then, right in the middle page, the second change is to extend the life of the contract from November 28th, 2018 through December 31st, 2020.
Okay. And that was pretty straightforward. We get anything about that?
I'll make a motion to approve the modification of our contract with the U.S. as presented.
I'll second the motion. The motion has been made in second, is to approve the modification of grant or agreement that we have. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. We have Jake once again, MOU Lake Health District. The first one we have, that I have in front of me, is Jake's one not to exceed 252,000.
For our Lake County enhanced supervision and treatment court, we have, we have previously received a grant from the Bureau of Justice. And it's a federal grant. The total of the grant is $400,000, of course, in three years. Within the grant, not to exceed 252,000, the change is for Lake Health District. What they do is they supply us with a .7 FTE certified alcohol drug counselor and about just over half-time mental health professional, licensed mental health professional. So we have those two folks dedicated to our treatment court. And it's just, we have the MOUs in place and everything in place to run it, so they're with us, but they had neglected to have finished was have exchanged the money, something in that agreement for the money. So what's before you is just identifying the monies we can now afford, when we can collect the money, we can hold another month, now we need to get the money out.
Allocation of grant funds to...
Absolutely.
...corporate services.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the MOU Lake Health District as presented.
I'll second the motion that was made in second, and defer the memorandum of understanding in Lake County and Lake District Hospital. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So Jake, here's the next one also, this is another MOU.
That second MOU is again the Lake Health District, this is the Lake Woodland Center. That is our state drug court grant, which also allocates not to exceed $46,000 over two-year periods, two-year grant. And I believe that's for just under a .3, might be a .26 FTE certified drug alcohol counselor. So in theory, between the federal grant and the state grant, we have about one full-time drug and alcohol counselor dedicated to our treatment court. However, because gender-specific groups, male groups, female groups, we also have the luxury of having a female drug and alcohol counselor and a male drug and alcohol counselor, actually two different drug and alcohol counselors for the male that work with us. So between the three of them, we did .96 work. So this is, again, we have all the, all the MOUs in place to work as a team, the thing I need like the gloves, the allocation of monies, so that's what's before you.
Probably I would mention on both of them is the funding doesn't come in full funding attributed by that.
Absolutely. These are in place so as long as the money is coming, which it will for two years in brief. We know that for sure.
Okay. I'll make the motion then to approve the MOU between Lake County and Lake Health District as presented.
I'll second the motion that was made in second, is to approve the MOU between Lake County and Lake Health District. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is the SIP agreement. We have, Mr. Gregory was not able to make it. Dr. Gregory, come up to me. He was in a meeting yesterday, put out, we had quite lengthy discussion, I guess. We've, I'll speak for myself, I've gotten where this looks like it's where we need to be, so... Ann, did you want to give the overview on the payment side of it, or anything?
Well, yeah, just the, the big overview, obviously, is this is a significant investment in our county, so for this to occur, there's different tax incentives that are in place to pencil this out for the company. And so this is the first time we entered into what they call, the state calls the strategic investment program. I think it was a long process, we had to learn a lot through it all, on all of the different values and rules and all those things. So again, very significant investment in our county, so it's pretty exciting to move forward with this. I think it's also important to point out what we heard yesterday from Todd Gregory, that this may not be operational until 2022. And so the, the sign that this has to occur to facilitate their process and all of the development. So it seems like they're doing this early, but yet they may just do, and want the investment in our county, too. So, um, because of the size of the project, the first 50 million is taxed just like all, all property and investment is taxed in the county, and then negotiated community service fee is the second piece of the payment. But it still has to meet rules for, again, a tax incentive. So, uh, it would be tough, and I, you know, again, it'd be tough to require them to pay full property taxes, that would pencil off for their company. So there's like a middle ground there. I think this agreement does that. County and districts still benefit, and their project can pencil out moving forward, so...
So Ann, when you say that, and we've had, over the last six months, all kinds of discussions on this, they couldn't afford to pay that. Currently, we're getting for those taxing districts, I, I'm going to guess that all, all of most of those lands are 10 cents on a dollar for taxation because of the tax rates for the, for the landowners. So this indeed is, is a much better thing for all the taxing districts to have for that.
Absolutely. Very exciting, right? It's very exciting.
Yeah.
I have nothing for you to add at this point. Okay. So, Ann, would you just...
I, Jim, you've seen the original, but we made a change just yesterday on the default amount. So it's each five, that section two at the bottom. We just cleaned up the language there. There is a...
Thank you, Ann.
Okay, I think, yeah, so we had a chance to do that. What that means is if they go into defaults, the, the, the abnormal market tax up to 50 million would be calculated and paid for the remaining years of the SIP exemption period. So, um, chances of default, like Todd said yesterday, are slim, but just in case there is still be a problem, that would come through on this program.
Well, and as we had those discussions, and it was that the, under the community service fee, after the solar, not the abnormal, it was revenue, and if they default, there will be no revenue, so there's no taxes available, which would make that...
So we, I just, this obviously we're doing here, and a reference to a previous section, so that would work.
So I'll make a motion at this time, and that we approve the proposed agreement of the Oregon Strategic Investment Program between Lake County and Obsidian Solar. And the details of that are in the document, that it would be, as Ann mentioned, the first 50 million would be taxed to normal taxation, providing these taxes to all the taxing districts there. And under the community service fee, the amount would be $2,000 a megawatt hour, and the proposed megawatt production would be 400, so that if, if it actually turns out to be that, it would be 800,000 annually. And the termination we made later is to how that money is distributed.
I'll second the motion. The motion has been made in second, is to approve the Oregon Strategic Investment Program Agreement in Lake County and Obsidian Financial Solar. Further discussion? I need to recognize Commissioner Shown and Cameron, Dave Knowles, for the work they've done on this. Past commissioners, we all bring our own expertise forward. There's claims within this that Dan has worked on, that is the way to help protect our county. And it's, it's very important, and everybody brings their special abilities forward. Last night, I had an awful moment that we just use these things as general almost anymore. Just a bradster, we're going to go back 18 years, we couldn't even afford a chair in our building for our employees. Things like this, the amount of taxes that we're bringing in is parallel to operations of the county. It's easy for the public to beat it up and say you're taking a less amount than what the 7,000 per megawatt is. A strategic investment plan is to entice and attract more people into your community. The amount of dollars that this will bring in for 15 years will help keep our county sustaining. And the team of people that I have had the pleasure to work with, and continue to work with, are the ones that make these things happen. So there's more than those three people that I have to say thank you for the work that you've done on that, and, and for our county, for these things to perform. With that said, this is just a part of the process. They, they, in option, still have to get through that check process and all that. It just sets the stakes for investors to come in and be able to invest in this. So thank you, guys, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Well, one more piece of discussion, because Alan and Aron are here from North Lake. We had quite a bit of discussion on how much we support what Obsidian ended up doing with the school district up there, providing 4 million at one time payment, $10,000 a megawatt hour, so it works out to be topping that presentation. So as we talk about all the taxing districts, this, this is a pretty unique thing. We hope, because Ann, I think we all heard, said, you know, we asked that question very straightforward yesterday in the build-out, and they really don't think they'll have it finished till 2022. And we hope the state legislature doesn't get their mitts in this, because right now, that 4 million is available unencumbered relative to the school funding for them. So we think this is a wonderful thing, and the school district's going to power, will use the money, they're really going to benefit, and it's one more positive thing about having this kind of project, so just going to put that on there.
Thank you. Further discussion? Is there, allow any from here from the chief, please? I can allow that, yeah.
Anyway, yeah, I don't have, I don't have any criticism of this, and I think I, I've got a spreadsheet here from Dave Kerr that came from Dave Knowles, the worksheet of the various choices and so on. And I guess my, perhaps my biggest comment is that when you get this kind of money for a finite period of time, then, you know, it's extremely important to figure out how to spend that money, where you're going to fall off the cliff in 15 years. And then secondly, I, I hope there are ways available to get some of the county general fund dollars into some infrastructure improvements in the north end of the county. Just get roads to be a big part of that. And, I mean, I don't know if we'll ever see a, a better Christmas gift, if you go, of money that's, up until now, was kind of unforeseen. And so I think there's an opportunity to, to, to do some planning on how to do that. And of course, as you said, that money's not coming in next year, if it comes in next month, it's about four years down the road, perhaps. And so, you know, there's ample time, and hopefully there'll be local areas included in these discussions substantially. And, you know, you've got, you've got Southland Project, two, the airport thing that's coming up later in the agenda, and of course, that's a, if you will, a benefit to the Southlands. And I recognize, you know, it's all in the county, but as we go along with these various projects that bring in extra money under its Red Rock or the Solar and so on, it's, it's a whole new opportunity, it seems to me, you know, while your timber receives go away and, and you guys are bumping along on a pretty skillful, skillful vessel. Anyway, I, I guess my state entity just would like to see into the local areas in the, in helping to dedicate the money as, as it goes forward.
So Alan, I'd just make a few comments, appreciate your time. I think here for this board, it's been very cognizant, you know, how we assign road work and to that end, the only money we had at Talman, that was destruction, was the fill paint. And we've committed for, I think, the last six years to a quarter of a million a year to the road department, just to keep that. So we're in that same mindset. As it relates to the, the north end of the county, being cognizant of the needs up there, I'll tell you just a really quick little story, I have met with Todd, like we all have at different times over this project. And I reminded him, and I reminded him again yesterday, because he brought up the fact that under the community service fee, Obsidian had nothing to say about that, they're not part of that discussion. And I said, "Well, I think you've already been part of that discussion, and you've set precedents that we need to follow going forward," which we try to do, "and that you negotiated with the school 400 or 4 million dollars upfront." That didn't, that wasn't a decision that we made, that wasn't something we were able to be part of this. And I said earlier, we really support that. But I'll make one side comment, because of my lack of memory. You're correct, and I hope that not only will you board, but the vision of all of the districts is, this ends in 15 years, relatively speaking, the bigger amounts, and so we plan accordingly not to get into permanent costs that we can't get ourselves out of. But going back to the other, this, this, the community service fee is going to pay 12 million. If it weren't for the schools, maybe it would be 16 million. And that part of it, you know, if we did it that way, and we split it on all the taxing districts, the school wouldn't benefit at all, relatively speaking, those would just be offsets to, to the state school funding. So, you know, all that stuff, and that's why I appreciate your comments, that those are things that we have talked about, been aware of, and relative to making sure that projects that benefit all of the county, I think that you will find, it's a good reminder, that you will find that this project, we are very grateful that if we, I'll just say me personally right now, if we could just do it by our lonesome, every taxing district up there that resides in this would benefit by this. And that may be the way that's, with the money. One last little comment, because someone mentioned to me the other day, they said, "They hope this money can stay in the north end." And I said, "That's where the taxing districts are. We're not going to send the money someplace else."
Further discussion?
Question?
Just one.
First off, I want to agree with everything Alan was discussing, and we thought we need to reconsider. I have a couple questions. There have been discussions about for several years, how many birds will die from meat generated from these units as there is been a study? What? Just exactly where it's going, will there be any wildlife disturbance? Is it going to be in an area where they travel back and forth all the time? They come off haze dew and go down? Has there any setting been made on whether it's going to upset that? I just heard you think that we have one of these systems in East of Christmas Valley, about a three-mile road. How much is the county gaining from them? It's a small unit, but what? And is Michigan getting any of it to use up home, or is it all being sent north? The money going into the general fund, we touched that. The problem, when this goes, who cleans the site? I realize that there's a contract in here where the site has to be cleaned up, but it's my understanding, they only have to go down four feet to clean it. Some of these posts are eight foot. Now what happened to the four foot of that steel post that's under the four foot they have to clean?
So I'm going to go ahead and finish our motion in second, finish that, and then we'll address some of those. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Wrong. A lot of those questions will be answered through the UPSEC process. If you visit with Mr. Gregory, they have to do all the studies. It's in a migration route, and it is in a winter range for wildlife, elk and deer, and they have to, and they're working with the State of Oregon right now, they have to mitigate and make things that are allowable within that land use zone. And with that, they're working with the State of Oregon, how you mentioned it yesterday, I talked to them one-on-one, so they're working on that part of it. And they, the UPSEC process hasn't been finalized. All the, from cultural to wildlife, to all that, has to be studied, and they're spending a lot of money on that. If there's, from wetland disposal sites to wildlife, they may have to have open spaces, they may have to build around it. That's all decided through permitting process. We're almost getting to the part of the head of the force today because of funding. If this happens, if it's built, the funding probably won't come in for four years. We don't even know who will be setting this order, commissioners. We can strategically put things in place of what we believe is going to be. Budget committee is the number one, keep your budget committee aware of what's going on, as these dollars come in. We don't know if Hill will be fully funded, if this, if our general fund revenues lock in. Some of those questions, we can't answer today and guarantee today, but we can work on a strategy, as Alan said, of what, this is more flexible dollars than what we've been used to get. So there, there can be opportunity for the budget committee and the commissioners to set in place when these dollars start coming in.
I have one request. Can somebody make a note that if any of this goes to public discussion? Can somebody make a note that if any of this goes to public discussion, I can be notified ahead of time?
All of our stuff is notified. We don't normally practice that we send out individual because of, we would probably have a list that'd be a mile long on certain different things. So Ron, I hate to tell you something that might not be followed through on. So I would recommend be sure and watch our agendas, be sure and communicate with us. And that's not what you want here, but so it wouldn't fall through the cracks. I think that's my best recommendation. I'm only alone. I don't know. But we haven't done that practice. We've had that request a few times. Very rare that we do that.
So just for clarification, when you say notified about discussion on this, what, what do you got in mind, Ron? What kind of discussion on this? We decided today to approve the SIP.
I understand rather say that they're going to go in, into the area of some of my questions.
Okay.
If there's any further discussion on any of this.
Oh.
All I want to do is be there to ask some questions or get some sort of an answer.
So I would recommend you reach out to the Board of the Department of Fish and Wildlife because that's who Obsidian is working with to do the mitigation because they do have mitigation and ask them to be sure in any public hearings they might have on this project that they contact you directly.
And introduce, introduce I am the county UPSEC. If you really wanted it, they should have every public meeting that has to do with the permitting of this. It's not, it's not approved at this time and some of your concerns can be addressed during the hearing process. Sorry, I misunderstood it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving along, our non-disturbishing coordination agreement. We've had a couple of those before. These are the same I was told. Mr. Bailey, have you had a chance to review those?
Yes, I have. This simply assures, is part of the solar process, assures that we will not disturb their, our site without, so we don't give up anything other than notice and not party and wrecking their operation.
But all, a lot of the properties within Lake County and the mineral rights are under by the county.
Right. This is not actually with the solar advice. This is with the general that are there. So we retain the mineral rights to those and it's only certain that we're going to start accessing the minerals without notice.
So, yes, so Mr. Bailey, the motion that I was going to make as we suggest that we approve all three of them because they're between the Kittredge Park and LLC and Lake County mineral are, and described by the legal description of each exhibit A, the document, is that satisfactory?
Yes, you can do that. You can move to approve all three of the documents during the support mission agreements.
Okay.
So then, I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve all three agreements with the descriptions, attachments. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The right of way we're carrying forward to the next meeting, the mine essence and road master is looking at that. Airports solar amendment number one, this is. Let me. I do, I don't have that absolute amendment. I have the original agreement. In the original agreement, there was some burrage dates and the dollar amount was wrong, so we have to do an amendment. So the amendment didn't attach this, this is highlighted, the date of July first, eighteen through thirty nineteen. And the other burrage here that's wrong, we wrote that to be corrected in the amendment. And seven thousand dollars for megawatt, none of it's wrong, we corrected, so the amendment will show that. You just haven't, you haven't visited them. Oh, I'm sorry. For the, I don't have the, or is this, that's the original agreement? So did you take it? So amendment number two. So we, it should be two attachments. Correctly, this, this is, I didn't see that.
So, okay.
Well, just basically fixing dates and the disappropriate number calculated by the megawatt sticker.
I'll move to approve amendment two, airport solar project.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept amendment number two to the airport solar agreement. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, go ahead and vote on the status of questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Yes.
So that's, that one, the tax issue is seven thousand per megawatt.
Yes.
Times forty-seven point?
Two-five.
Two, yeah.
Three. There was some thousand.
And that's, that's the SIP, if you will.
That's the pill.
The tax bill.
That's, yeah, that's the pill.
Okay, okay. And does public property put the mineral rates on the property?
Put the red for what?
The red and the rate on the property?
Six, I think it starts at sixty-two thousand and then it goes up.
Yeah, I was going to say sixty-four.
Sixty-four?
Yeah. And the agreement, just barely under three twenty.
So the reason that's in the pilot program is the size of it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not trying to hurt you.
And the sixty-four thousand is the lease of the property. The seven thousand dollars for megawatts is the taxation that would be distributed amongst the.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's, it's for the revenue that it used to exist. Yeah, it'd be great for the relevant, for the airport, it's an enterprise. That doesn't go to the general fund.
Six thousand goes to the.
That goes to the airport. It's a standard one-time. It's a supplement, nice and general fund dollars over the years, but that sixty-four thousand that escalates over the years will be used at the airport.
In the past, when we released that round out for grazing and we had to sit in this.
We got the two thousand dollars.
Exactly. Those two thousand dollars went into the airport fund.
Okay. Okay. And then just also to clarify to me, the Red Rock deal is an enterprise zone.
That's a community service fee, the fifteen year community service fee negotiated.
And a lot of that is dedicated toward the natural gas pipeline, is that correct?
Yes, the county will start the first year, will receive about eighty thousand dollars a year in community service fee and go up over fifteen years. I forget about this, fifteen year. At the same time, the capacity over four inches hard line up to six inches, the capacity on natural gas is owned by the county to entice, trying to, or negotiate, trying to get that through to our other industries and into the community.
So that's eighty a year?
Fifty.
Eighty a year.
Oh, eighty, it starts out at eighty. The town in Lakeview will give about two hundred thousand.
But you don't, you don't end up paying that back to them for the pipeline? It's the pipeline plus eighty thousand. And that eighty thousand goes over the general fund or anything?
It's flexible, it's going to go to the general fund.
But not into the enterprise zone?
No.
Okay. All right. I kind of understand. Okay. So next item, minute is wolf depredation funds. Melanie, show. Go ahead, Melanie.
I was recently approached from Jason Marver. He's the regional manager from ODFW. He administers the wolf depredation fund in Oregon. We receive funds from him annually from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. This year, we received four thousand dollars total for depredation projects. Willawa County's been having severe depredation and would like us to transfer some funds if they're available. I met with the committee and talked to them and they don't want to give up all of our funds just in case because we do have some in the area. So they would like to give them a thousand dollars at this time, as it exists.
And for these funds to be able to be contributed to the depredation, Willawa County takes a motion by the board commissioners and, from a budget wise, this is all allowable?
Yes.
And just one other point for, because you and Melanie, you chair the committee, Melanie's.
No, I don't chair the committee.
You're on the committee, excuse me. But these dollars, if we don't use them here, they go back.
They go back in February.
Yeah. So this is, this is again, even though it's not neighbor, it is adjacent, this is a neighbor that the North East Service has a serious problem, so it's good to know. So I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of a thousand dollars over the wolf depredation fund.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the thousand dollars contribution to Willawa County's wolf depredation. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just, I'm sorry, I didn't. Just so it's very clear for the record, when we say we're going to send a thousand dollars of Lake County money, that Lake County money is a result of what we're saying, it's state funds.
Of course.
They're not, they're not county general funds.
Yep. All right. Next item, AOC County Road Program. We have an invoice that we received from AOC. There's been a request for us to pay an invoice, one-time invoice. And so, if any further discussion, if I had a discussion yesterday.
Yeah, it's just a obligation, I don't want to use that term, and I guess I just use that term, but it's a responsibility of all thirty-six counties to keep our association of the counties whole and our Oasis Road Program whole. In doing so, we've all been asked to contribute, not like amounts, but proportion to what our dues are. And it's more than the right amount to do. I will make a motion that we approve the payment to the Association of Orange Counties on behalf of Lake County.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to pay the invoice, one-time invoice to AOC as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item we have. We've been approached, Dolly Parton Imagination Library for donation. We donated last year, this is county-wide, to take it to do this. Melanie, do you have a little bit of an overview for anything?
Yeah, sure. So the Dolly Parton Imagination Library was started by Dolly Parton. Her father was a librarian and she wanted to do what she could to give back to make sure that there were no other children that were there. So from the time a child's born to the time they turn five, they get a book every month, free of charge. They get a little packet saying, this book will donate advice so and so if you want recognition. And so it's a great program. They get kids reading at home, outside of school. They get them in the summer. It's fun. I think Lake County's up to sixty-four percent of enrollment already, which they were hoping to be like forty percent. So it's been great. We donated a thousand dollars last year from the Video Library Fund to help get this program started in Lake County and they're having great success so far.
What do you need to say?
I'm thinking we need to continue. I have heard nothing of good things about it around the county.
I agree.
I'll make a motion that we approve a thousand dollars.
I'll video. I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to grant one thousand dollars out of Video Library Fund. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have amendments, number six, seven, quote sixteen, number nine, number twenty-first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve amendments mentioned. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Legal updates?
We have one for executive session and for regular session. Every year, I bring down the county cookies for the, for the county. And the cookies and my briefcase are in my car in the van. I took my wife's car because it has, that's on it, so it gets down here. So next meeting, I'll bring the cookies.
That sounds like a outgoing board is the trouble.
That's the main way. That sounds like a real thing, Mr. Bailey.
I have to spend some time with you, you know, at your office and take this creative.
The cookies were there when you were doing, you know. They do, they never make it back.
Okay, with that, we're going to go into executive session under one nine two point six six zero two G H, actually. And those remaining will be the board. Legal, obviously, legal counsel, our administrators, what about commissioner-elect, is that allowable at this time?
Technically, no.
Okay. Will so, ultimately.
Technically, yes.
That depresses that.